Good morning. I'd like to call the Thursday, May 6th meeting of the Davidson County Commissioners to order. And I'll call on Commissioner Shores to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Most heavenly gracious God, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time together. And Father, as we have come together as a group to make the decisions of this county, Father, we pray that you would give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the ability to make those decisions in a manner that would be pleasing to you. Father, we just ask, Lord, that you would go with our national leadership, our state leadership, that, Lord, we pray that you would go with each and every one of us as we make these decisions for the citizens that we serve. Lord, we do all this in your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you to our meeting today. It's good to see Dr. Hartness with us. And we'll be proud to listen to what you have to say. The Sheriff's with us, many of our supervisors and department heads with us. Thank you for being here. I need to ask that we excuse Commissioner Yates today. He is unable to be at this meeting. May I have a motion and a second to excuse him?
Go move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Shell and Commissioner Trul.
We need to do these by roll call, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
All right. Due to a change in lead time for legal notice publication, staff is asking that scheduled public hearing for fiscal year '21, '22 budget be added to the agenda as Agenda Item 5E. This is to call for a public hearing on the budget for May the 25th, 2021. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, make a motion that with the addition, we approve them in the agenda.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And this is to adopt the amended agenda. We'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. That motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
All right, let's go on to deliberation. We have a Cardinal Innovation presentation on medical transformation, and Mr. Smith will lead this off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask Karen Bentley to come up, please, from Cardinal Innovations. About, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, Chairwoman Watford and I were on a Zoom call about Medicaid transformation. I think we sent the entire board some materials from that meeting. Cardinal hosted the Zoom call with several counties to explain what is coming forth at the state level with pretty dramatic changes to Medicaid population and so forth coming in July. So I asked them to come and give you guys, all of you, the same presentation we all saw that day. So I'm going to turn it over to Karen.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for having me. As manager Smith and assistant manager Martin, it's very nice to put faces with names. We've been virtual for months, so it's very nice to meet you personally. Board, Chairwoman Watford, thank you for having me here today. As your manager noted, and you probably know, there's a lot going on in the state of North Carolina around Medicaid transformation. My team, I have the pleasure of leading all of our community-facing team across our entire service area. And we have really been about being out and about, connecting with our nonprofit agencies, other impacted organizations around what is coming. Because it is in two short months, standard plans will go live. And about 90% of the state Medicaid population will transition to a standard plan away from the LME MCO system. So you can imagine the significant disruption that is about to come. So again, thank you for the opportunity to come and give you an overview of what is about to come this year and then following in 2022 as the tailored plan, or, excuse me, as the LME MCOs transition to tailored plans. So you should have a deck with you. I see it up on the screen here. There are lots of links at the end of this presentation for additional information, both at the state level, at the Cardinal level, and at the community level. So as we go through this, if there are community organizations that you are connected with, that you believe would benefit by receiving this information, please make a note of that and send those my way so I can make sure that my team is out connecting appropriately and effectively in the community.
Madam Clerk, does she need to click or move it through?
It's a PowerPoint, or not a PowerPoint. It's just a slideshow.
Okay, I got you.
Perfect.
So if you'll tell me when to advance, we will advance.
Okay, will do. So our mission, thanks for landing there. We always like to start every presentation with an anchoring around the mission. It's very straightforward. We work every day to improve the health and wellness of our members and their families. And that anchors, like I said, everything that we do. So the next slide gives you just an overview of the agenda here. This is a very comprehensive overview, but not exhaustive. So again, the links that are provided at the end of the presentation will really help you, if you so choose, really dig deeper into some of the content that is provided here this morning. So if you'll go to the next slide, please, and then one more.
Okay, I'm sorry. Give me just one second. I'm going to see if I can share this for Commissioner Shores. I'd sent it to him, but...
Okay, perfect. And I'm very open. If there are questions that you have as I'm running through this, just let me know, or we can wait till the end, whatever is your preference.
Debbie, I've got it on my phone now. Go ahead.
I think we're good. Hold on. Can you see it now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're all getting good at this technology business, aren't we?
Okay, that's where we're at.
Go back one more, if you wouldn't mind. Perfect, right there. Okay, so this is, you know, and I'm sure many of you are well aware of the high-level overview of what's going on. So I don't want to be redundant, but again, I want to be comprehensive and don't want to miss anything. So as I noted, North Carolina, really for the last 10 or 12 years, has been on this journey of Medicaid transformation. The LME MCO system rose up out of that. And then now, the next phase again is looking at an integrated model between standard and tailored plans. And so that's where we are now at this point. And July 1st, our standard plans go live. There will be five in the state where currently enrolled Medicaid members will have an opportunity to choose from. And then, like I said, the following year, July 1st of 2022, the LME MCOs convert to what we call tailored plans. Again, all of this is on a platform of integrated care. So as you know, currently, the LME MCOs are managing behavioral health, substance use disorder, intellectual and/or developmental disability care for the Medicaid population. So the transformation that is occurring is integrating, bringing in the physical health as well as the pharmacy benefits. So that's an important change. I think it's a great move. It's really whole-body care. So that's, at the net of it, that is what is at the center of transformation. Next slide, please. And the next slide gives you a side-by-side of the differences. And I really have articulated some of this already. Important dates here, July 1st already is two short months away, if you can believe that. We are in the middle of open enrollment for the standard plans. And that date, a close date is May 14th, I believe, for standard plans. And we'll go into that a little bit further in a couple more slides here. And as I noted, the difference, I think the key takeaway from this slide here, when you look side-by-side, obviously, the dates are different. So standard plans go live in July, as I said, this year. The tailored plans go live July of 2022. So all of the LME MCOs have the opportunity to respond to the state RFA to become tailored plans. The state is in the process of reviewing those currently. And we anticipate decisions June 11th is our date. Early June, I think we're safe to say, early to mid-June, we expect those decisions from the state. At a minimum, they will award four, and at the most, all seven. So we will, we all eagerly anticipate the decision from the state around tailored plans. And then we have a year, once that award is given, to prepare to become a tailored plan. So you can imagine building out a physical health network and pharmacy benefits in addition to the provider network that exists currently with all of the LME MCOs. We will be about that business over the next 12 months, once award comes. The other important distinction here between standard and tailored plans is the member type, if you will. So the standard plans will be managing care for the mild-to-moderate behavioral health patients. And this is a significant distinction. And then the tailored plans will have the higher acuity, more severe behavioral health, traumatic brain injury, and ADD population. So that's the demarcation line there. And then, important to note also, on the bottom of this slide here, the first bullet, both standard plans and tailored plans will be what we'd call social determinants of health, social drivers of health. So we will also be working very close with our members to address those unmet health needs around transportation, food insecurity, workforce development, things of that nature. Because we know, the state knows, and the medical community is aware that if we can address those unmet social needs, then our members are, excuse me, allergy season. Our members are more likely to have improved outcomes from a health perspective. All right, next slide. So this shows you here, and I'm not going to go through this list here, but I think what this illustrates for you is there's significant change coming across many sectors. Clearly, our medical landscape, our providers are in for a significant change because not only behavioral, but physical health now will be required of them to cover. And then pharmacy and behavioral health and ADD services. But there's also significant impact with our local agencies. And this is one reason that we want to make real sure that we are out in our communities, educating and raising awareness amongst our community stakeholders around the change that is coming and really partnering with them. And I know the standard plans are doing the same thing to really help them move through this change to make sure that our members don't miss a beat as far as receiving care is concerned. All right, next slide. So here's the list of the standard plans. And to make matters a little more confusing, so the regions that were carved out for the standard plans do not match the regions that exist currently with the LME MCOs. So you have a map here, and you'll notice that the yellow, Davidson sits right in that yellow. I think that's Region 2. I can't quite see it from here. But all of the Medicaid members in Region 2, from a standard plan perspective, will have an opportunity to choose from AmeriHealth CareTos, Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, and WellCare. So at open enrollment, current Medicaid enrollees were sent a packet and had the opportunity to choose one of those four plans. We anticipate that only about 10%... See, I need to get some water. So we anticipate only about 10% of Medicaid enrollees will actually make a choice. So at May 14th, at the end of enrollment, they, those that have not made a choice, will be auto-enrolled into one of these four plans. But they will have 90 days to determine if that plan is the best fit for them. And if they choose that it is not the best fit, they will have the opportunity to switch. And that is for the standard plan. Okay, next slide.
Let me ask you a quick question on that. As far as the plan is, who makes that determination? The county that calls upon the LMO for to provide a provider? Or the individual?
The individual member.
Followed.
Right.
And so you're exactly right. You're going to have just a very small number of people to make a choice.
Yeah, yeah.
In effect, it goes right back to the states making the choice for it. That's what it amounts to, basically. Am I correct on that?
They will be auto-enrolled, correct. And then they do have 90 days to make a determination of another plan.
That's not a Cardinal issue. I think that's on the state level.
Correct, correct, yeah.
The problem with the 90 days is none of them people who are going to receive this even know how to compare those four plans.
Yeah.
They don't have any way of knowing which one's better for them.
Right, so a couple slides. We're going to get to what we call the Medicaid broker. So the state has contracted with a company named Maximus, and they are what we call a Medicaid broker. And they help members essentially navigate the choices. They don't tell them, they don't assign them, they don't tell them which plan is better for them. But they are a resource to, for the members to sit down with them, probably virtually. But they are embedded in regional offices as well. But that is exactly why the state has contracted with them, to help educate, help them understand what their choices are, really to help them make the best decision. Because you're spot on. It's quite a daunting task, as you can imagine.
Is that Maximus? Are they going to have enough people where, when these people call in, they don't say that there's 15 people ahead of you? Please hold a second. Because we need to have, I mean, these people are going to be confused anyway. We need to have, whenever they call in, they need to be talking to somebody.
That's right.
And on a different level, I guess where I was going with the state making a decision on behalf, what discourages lobbying the state to choose a certain provider? To me, that's a conflict. But I don't know how to change that. Because if the state's involved in making that choice, they may favor one simply because of the lobbying efforts of that one. And it just opens up the door for more corruption, in my opinion. If it's going to be fixed, it needs to be fixed. We're just, as someone said earlier in another meeting, we're putting a Band-Aid on a surgical wound that needs to be addressed. I mean, that's just, that's one of my concerns. It's not so much the provider. I mean, not the provider or Cardinal, you know, it's more of what they're putting in place. Now, I think it's Lady, you have something to say about that?
Hi, Karen. Come on up. Good morning. Hi, I'm Karen Townsend-Donner. I'm with Cardinal, and I just wanted to address your question. So as about now, out of all of the recipients, only 94,000 have signed up. And even though we have a lot more people to sign up, they are not locked in. So if they sign, if they are signed up, they have a choice to switch. But that's why we really want to get more involved with Davidson County to learn about, you know, the churches, the nonprofits you have, the big organizations you have here, so we can educate the community about their choices. Because the great thing about this is that they do have a choice now. Right now, they just get assigned, and they're told, here's your doctor, here's where they are, and go. So now, they get to look at all these plans and think, okay, what is the best choice for my family? But we need your help to find out where we can reach the most people because we have a great community outreach team that will educate them. And we also want to do that through the schools, to make sure the parents know. But anyway, just, I just wanted to step in and say that, so. Thank you. Yeah.
Just another question. You brought up providers. Are the providers going to be the same with all the plans?
You know, I don't know that they will. Because I would imagine there's a significant amount of overlap, absolutely.
Well, that brings up the other question that if they're put into a plan that their provider is not in, then what's their choices then?
Then they can switch plans. Because the goal is for them to be able to keep their provider.
After 90 days?
Mm-hmm.
After the 90 days, they have no choice?
Then it would be an annual enrollment phenomenon.
So they would have to change providers?
Right, if they're providing, or if it's an out-of-network phenomenon, then that there would be an out-of-network situation.
Are the out-of-network benefits the same as the in-network benefits?
I think it probably depends on the commercial plan.
They're generally not.
True.
That's a good question, Commissioner.
Yeah. This illustrates for you here, from both a graphical illustrative perspective and then the numbers on the left, the blue are the one-point representative of the 2.5 million Medicaid recipients that will be transitioning to standard plans on July 1st of this year. The lighter green are the balance of that. And those would be the members, like I said earlier, with the more severe behavioral health needs, ADD, traumatic brain injury, members that will be staying with the LME MCO system. All right, next slide, please. So this is exactly what we have just been talking about around enrollment choice and then auto-enrollment. I think I've probably covered everything here. So the state, again, through the Medicaid roles, Medicaid recipients that meet the standard plan eligibility criteria did receive open enrollment packets and materials at the beginning of the open enrollment period. And then those who qualify for the standard plan will be auto-enrolled if they don't select a plan. And I think, Commissioner Shell, that goes back to your question. And I think we can dig into a little bit from the standard plan side and get some of your questions answered. And maybe we could even get some of our standard plan colleagues to come before the board and answer some of those more granular questions. I think that would be helpful for you.
Hate to keep asking questions, but when they make a decision to put somebody in the standard plan, and they obviously don't belong in the standard plan, they need to be in the other plan, who makes the decision to move them? Or can they be moved?
Yes, they can be moved. And we recognize that there will be a significant amount of crossover. And we are building the standard plans and the tailored plans, or the LME MCOs currently have a very structured process that is being developed right now to accommodate that crossover. Because there will be, as you can imagine, particularly, you know, from an MHSUD perspective, members kind of sometimes ramp up into that higher acuity, and then they ramp back down. And so we do recognize and understand that there will be crossover. And the state has recognized that as well. So we've built that infrastructure to accommodate that.
Because, just thinking about it, it seems to me that the four or five standard plans will be attempting to get as many people in their plan as possible because that's where they're going to make the money. So how does it, is it based on diagnostic-related group?
Yes, yes.
Do you have copies of the plans and the services that are offered in each plan currently?
For the standard plans? We do not, but we can certainly get you links to that information.
Okay. Because if we want community involvement and to, you know, put it out to like the arc of Davidson County and our different areas here, then we need to get those plans and start educating folks today. And I'm like Commissioner McClure and Commissioner Shell, you know. It doesn't make sense that if the state puts out and puts five carriers out there, why are they not, if you're going to have five involved, they ought to offer the same. It ought to be just kind of mirrored, if that's the case. If it's because one person couldn't handle all of it, or it's just better for services, or this person's going to offer this, and this is going to offer this. I understand that. But it does seem like a little bit of a conflict if, because if the state's going to say it, well, hey, the state could put them all in this one and not this one. So I don't, being able to look at it, we could probably differentiate, you know, some of the things that we have questions about.
Commissioner, I just want to say that the great thing about going to managed care, and I've been researching this with NIH, is that it gives, it promotes whole-centered care. So it really, really looks at the patient and sees what the patient needs instead of, like you say, just sticking them where we want them as the state. So I think they have a lot more choice, and they do offer different services. But I can provide all of the commissioners with that information on the different plans. So I'm happy to do that.
Yeah. All right. I think we've covered everything on this slide here. Let's move on to the next slide. Okay, here's Maximus. I had mentioned this early. This is the Medicaid Enrollment Broker. And this shares with you what they do and what they don't do. So they, like I said earlier, they provide Medicaid recipients with enrollment, or, excuse me, with information about the plans. But they do not select the plan for the members. So they really are an informational resource for the members that would sit down, to your point, Commissioner Elliott, and help the member review, side-by-side, all of the plans so that that member can understand which plan meets his or her needs the best and the family's needs the best. Because there is variation, you know, the commercial plans, some are going to, they'll offer different incentives and value adds that may be, you know, more important to one member than the other. And that really, at the core, is the purpose of Maximus, to be that resource for the members, to help them make an informed choice without choosing for them.
Are you saying that the managing agent works in close relationship to the patient to tell, to keep them up to date? And the patient has options that they can choose from in conference? Because that's so, that's not true at all. I mean, I can give you situations where a person's been placed under a managing agent and told, next week, you're moving. Don't tell them where, don't tell them nothing, don't ask them anything. They have no input. I mean, it's a pretty picture, but that's not the way it works. And if you ever got somebody in one of these facilities, you know what I'm talking about. That's not the way it works. We talk a pretty picture, but that's not the way it works. You know, it's put them here, don't care how they're fed, don't care what they're fed, don't care anything about the facility. You take a mentally ill person, they should not be in a halfway house, but they are with people who are on drugs. It's not the way it's supposed to be. And what we've got to do is start getting some managing agents that care about these people and quit worrying about the pocketbook so much. But I'm telling you, from experience, I know what I'm talking about. And so I know when somebody's trying to inflict their balloon, and it's not true. It's not true. And you're going to have more and more people seeing that it's not true. And you're starting to see that now. We've got to start fixing this problem. And I couldn't allow people who may be listening to this to think that it's such a beautiful picture because it's not. You got, the FCS have a tough job. But they've got to start including those patients and quit talking about it. That gives them the option to do, that's bull. They don't have the option to do anything. They don't even know what's going on. Don't even, you'll move next week, don't tell them where, don't tell the families where, don't even know anything. They're supposed to be in consultation with that patient to upgrade it, to tell them about things. It's not, because they don't. It's not the way it works. And if we're really going to talk about these things, we need to fix this where it works the way we say it works or it's supposed to work. And we don't. A lot of these people don't even have any input. It goes to DSS, a lot of it. And so I couldn't, I couldn't allow you to keep saying, we're going to be in consultation, and they're going to be choosing what plan. That's not true. It's not true now. It hadn't been in the past, and that's where even we're at, where we're at. Sorry, but that's the way it is. People will tell me all they want to, but unless you've been there, unless you've got people in situations like that, you're only projected with the pretty picture that you would like it to be. Because that's not the way it is once it's implemented. That's not even arguable. I can prove it, time after time after time. It's not the way it is.
Well, Commissioner, we definitely need your input because we want to know what's happening to the constituents. And we have care coordinators at Cardinal because we deal with mental health. So what they do is they help, for example, we have a family, a single mom, and two of her children have developmental disabilities. And so what makes us kind of unique is that we have someone who coordinates everything for them, all their activities, to make sure, you know, they're going to school, that they're going to soccer, that the mom has childcare. So it's a big web, as you say. But yeah, you're absolutely right. We have to make sure these people aren't falling. We have to make sure these people aren't falling to the cracks. I mean, it's tough already and there's, it's such a web, you know what I mean? From families to people getting out, people getting out of prison, for example. You know, I mean, years ago when I was at the governor's office, I was told after, after they get out of prison, they get 30 days' supply of medicine and then they go. There was no coordination. So that's a problem. So we even work with institutions, justice and the jails and the prisons to make sure, you know, because when people go into jail, they lose their Medicaid. And so we have, there has to be connection points to when they leave, we pick them up and find out because we can't have people without medications roaming streets, right? That puts our communities at risk. So we need your input to know what's going on because you're the expert, right? You're the expert on this community. We aren't.
Well, I can, I can tell you as a parent of a disabled child who has, you know, my son is turning 17, June 14th. Developmentally, he's probably like a two-year-old. For a family to have to, to sit and know that, you know, my little boy is going to be with me for the rest of his life, still changing diapers. He's 17 years old. I change diapers every day in my life. To have my wife feel guilty, to have to have a respite care nurse to come watch our son because she doesn't feel like she's a good mother because somebody else has to watch, but we have to be involved with my daughter's life too so she doesn't resent her brother. The things that go on mentally and physically and emotionally with families with kids like this, and then you're begging for hours for a respite care nurse to come in, you feel guilty about it, then you're trying to do what's best for your child. That's why we're so passionate here because it touches all of us, but it really touches me. And I've seen the tears. I've been in the communications and not knowing what's going on and people talking above your head and saying, "This is what's best for your child." And then you're right in the middle of it and you're lost. And the main thing that I'm concerned about is my child and I want the best for him because I know when I'm dead and gone, somebody's got to take care of him. And I want to make sure that he's left in good hands. That's why we're so passionate. Just a question, if they separate these folks and they go to the, not the standard plan, but to tailored plan, are they going to be using the same LME MCOs that they're using now?
It depends on the tailored plan awards and what ultimately the geographies look like.
What I'm saying is, you said a while ago that the, that the boundaries for this plan are not the same as the LME MCO's plan. My question is, if they don't qualify for the standard plan, are they going to stay in the LME MCOs that they are presently in?
If the current LME MCO that is serving that member remains in that geography, then yes.
If what? Tell me that again.
So the state will award at a minimum four LME MCOs, at the most seven. So if all seven are awarded, those geographies will remain the same so the member would stay with the LME MCO they are currently. If the state awards fewer than seven, then those geographies will likely change. So if, if the member is residing in a geography that is served now by a different LME MCO because of tailored plan award, then that member would transition to that new LME MCO that's serving that geography.
And that brings up another problem. If they transition to another LME MCO, they've got to transfer all the people that's taking care of their kids. This is a mess. I can't see how that's, how that's going to benefit anybody. It's just going to be confusing for somebody to be in an LME MCO and receiving services and because they're not in this geographic area, "We're going to put you in this other place." Now you're going to have to get used to other people that's taking care of your kids. You're going to have to wade through that paperwork that you're going to have to do to set it up. Y'all thought about that?
I mean, you're absolutely right. This is complicated. This is complicated. This is directed by the state, though.
Yes.
We, we don't have control over that, but...
I understand.
But what, but what we will do is we will do our level best to ensure that there is no laps in care, that there is seamless transition for the members that they, that they wouldn't even know, other than maybe the logo on the information that comes to them is different, right? But their care, their provider should not change. And that, that is our commitment at Cardinal to make sure that the significant disruption that is headed our way is absolutely as smooth as possible for our members.
Bottom line, this is state-driven, so we're going to have to accept it whether we like it or not.
But we want to help educate the community. So whatever we can do, you know, whatever gaps and holes we see, we want to know and be right here to walk it, to walk through.
Well, they're going to be calling their commissioners and I'm going to be calling MAXIMUS. They're going to call the commissioner and say, "What is this and what do I do?"
Right.
But education, you know, that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
You know, that's what we can be right now.
Yeah.
Get this information, it would help.
Yeah, and we'll leave this with you. And that's, you know, we would welcome the continued partnership between you and us. Kara is your regional executive for, for this county and for the triad region and you should have her on rapid dial. Because anytime you hear from a constituent that you're, that is experiencing challenges or issues with the LME MCO system, and I'll tell you even the standard plans, we will, we will come alongside you and make sure that you get what you need and make sure that your members and constituents get what they need because this is, this is, this is challenging. And they are the most vulnerable members of our community, of your community. And they, we, they, we can't miss a beat with them. All right, let's move on to the next slide. I think we're about done here. This is really just informational. MAXIMUS is out in the communities doing events as well. This is not very specific. If you would like to know where these MAXIMUS events are, let us do the legwork for you and, and we'll let you know so you can let your constituents know where those events are. Again, these are the brokers, this is the Medicaid broker. So they're, they're the experts on all the standard plans and understanding how they all compare and contrast. So these events should allow members and constituents to get a broad view of what their options are. So let us do the legwork here for you if you're interested in understanding where these events are and we'll get those to you.
Could we have an event here, you know, to kind of set that up for all of our agencies and teachers and I would love that.
Yeah. Can you make a note, make a note of that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right, next slide. I touched on these earlier, these are important enrollment dates. As I mentioned, we are coming rapidly to the close of the standard plan open enrollment. May 14th is that day. And then as we've been talking about, there is a 90-day window for those members that are auto-assigned to determine if the current plan they have is a good fit. If not, they will, can make a choice for another plan. And then of course, July 1st is go live for the standard plan.
So everybody should have received a packet to be able, well, I haven't.
Could we, could we receive a packet to, to view? Wouldn't y'all like to?
I'll call, I'll call MAXIMUS and get a packet.
Okay. That's, you know, we, we have to be informed.
Yeah, so Medicaid enrollees receive the packets directly. So we'll make sure you get, get it so you can see what they received.
Yeah.
So what if you don't receive a packet? Because I have not gotten one.
So this would be just for Medicaid enrollees?
Just for Medicaid enrollees?
Correct.
I had a developmentally disabled person, but I didn't get one, but that's all right.
We'll get you one.
He's out of treatment now, but I was just wondering.
Okay. All right, next slide, please. We can skip this slide, this, like I said, this is a presentation that we have been providing out to the community. So this is relevant to the community agencies, but I really wanted to present this to you so you could see what we were sharing out in the community. But this is not germane to this board here for today. So we can skip this slide. Okay, so this slide and the next couple of slides are chock full of phone numbers, links. You can see here that these, this is the information for all of the standard plans. And then the next slide is going to give you contact information for us at Cardinal. Of course, Kara and myself, I would hope, would be your number one go-tos. That's why we're here is so you know who to call to get answers and that's our commitment to get you what you need in, in rapid fashion so you don't have to send an email or call an 800 number. We prefer the, the one-to-one direct contact.
Could you get that to our clerk and she could send it to us?
I can send an email out.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, next.
Do you want the entire presentation?
Not necessarily. I think the contact, I think the, just the contact information would be.
Well, I'd like to present. Have a slide presentation and also have a comparison of the four plans.
That would be great.
All right, and the next slide, please. Again, more links for you here. This is very broad here. This is NCDHHs, contact information. Of course, our website is a terrific resource for, well, obviously everything we're doing at Cardinal Innovations, but we have a very robust section on our website around Medicaid transformation, which is a great go-to for, for you, for your constituents to learn more about Medicaid transformation. And then NC Medicaid, so it really kind of depends on, you know, at which level you seek to get the information. We wanted just to be very comprehensive in the resources that we're providing here and that's what this is illustrating. And then I think that is, one more slide, please. And you can scroll through to the end for me. Yeah, I'm not going to make you take a quiz. Again, this is for our community members. We want to make sure that they're retaining what we're sharing with them so we understand what the opportunities are for more information. So that really is, like I said, it's, was a very comprehensive but not exhaustive overview, but your questions have been really, really great. We've got some homework to do, some information to get back to you. I think the idea, Commissioner Elliott, about an event here is a great, a great call. We have been doing this presentation, like I said, virtually, and we've had enormous positive response. I mean, 50, 70 people calling in to receive this. And I, I took a quick scan of the list and we've had some Davidson County school folks participate. So there is, you know, really heightened interest on this, but if we can bring it here and do face-to-face, we are very happy to do that.
One other thing I'd like for, for us to have is this, if this person is deemed to be in the tailored plan, and they're, how are they going to be assigned? Are they going to be assigned to the current LME MCO? And if not, why not? And how do they get around it? Because that's going to be a question for us, I'm sure. If you could tell us how that's going to work.
Yes, sir. Got that. Okay. All right, and I, Kara did have an opportunity to introduce herself and I've, I've alluded to the fact that she in Davidson County will be your go-to for everything Cardinal. She'll make sure that she has, that you have her contact information. Of course, I'm, I'm a good backup. But if you don't mind, can you come up and just give a minute or so of your background so they understand what your background is and how you might be able to, to serve their needs?
Well, thank you for having us. Again, my name is Kara Townsend-Donner and I live in the triad and have five counties here with Cardinal. My background is government affairs and public policy for 20 years. So I've worked for members of Congress and one of the presidents and then Governor McCrory was my last government boss, but I handled all policy for him, healthcare, also law enforcement. And so feel free to use me as a resource for anything that's going on with the state as well. But my, my lot in life is to advocate for others. That's why I'm here. My position before this, I did, I handled regional affairs for the census, which is really exciting in the triad. And I believe you work with Rick Farmer, who is one of my colleagues, who's great for the census. But we worked hard to make sure people were educated because it matters that we know, you know, who is here and contributing to our society. And so I love educating the community. So use me as a resource for that, whether that's working with the churches or working with nonprofits, anywhere you know where we can reach out. And I know that our timeline is ticking. So if we need to do an event next week, you know, or as soon as we can do an event, let's do that. And we'll get other people here from Cardinal to help educate however needed work for the schools. So just, I'm excited to meet you and be here. So thank you again for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure we got clear what we, what we were asking for because there was a lot of things here. Do you guys have a way to show comparison of the plans?
We don't, we don't yet, but I will get that. I'm going to work with the organizing authority.
Copies of the packets that the Medicaid recipients receive as well?
I think we can get that. I would call the state and, yeah.
I'll work on getting that for you.
Commissioner McClellan's last question about how someone gets in and out of the tailored plan, whether there are going to be any MCOs. Who can we, will you guys be able to help us with that?
We'll let, we'll get that for you.
Is that a broker? Okay.
Yeah, we will know, I believe, June 11th, whether...
That's when we anticipate the awards. So once that, once those awards are announced, we'll know what the geographies are.
Okay.
And, but we are, in fact, we are, we're meeting regularly about that very thing, right? How do we transition members, whether it's to tailored plan or, excuse me, to standard plans, which is right before us? So that's what we're about right now. But the other piece too is transition, if needed, between tailored plans, LME MCOs. So we can be go-to for that, Casey.
Okay. And the last one, I guess, if you want to do an event, but when I hear event that large, just going down, I start to think logistics, how to plan, all that, that's very daunting. Is there, especially to do it like that? Is there a easy path to get who we need to do or do we want to do it pick and choose? You know, the schools are going to be a good place to start. Of course, DSS in and of itself providing information to their own clients is probably a great place to start. So you guys have any thoughts on that?
I mean, I, just from experience, I think the best thing is to try at this juncture is try, is try to tag on to another event. You know, and be a teacher or if there's a big church event that you know is coming up or a festival, anything, that's probably the best way at this time.
If you all know of any events that we can tag on to, let me know. I'll try to play middleman on this one and get these folks patched to the event. You all probably would know faster than I do of anything. Or a big place we can get our hands on a lot of folks to spread the word.
We have someone with it.
Yeah, so I'm sorry to interrupt. I thought this was more about tailored plan, so I didn't jump in, but there's a lot of questions about the standard plan, right?
Trish, can you step up?
I'm sorry. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions about the standard plan. So DSS has been very involved. There's a Medicaid ombudsman, so once the clients select a plan, then they will have the opportunity to change a plan, as you've heard. But we are involved with, we have a liaison with every plan. We're working with them, we're coordinating. When our clients call us, we're referring. I'm getting a lot of calls. Y'all talked about getting commissioner calls. I'm getting a lot of calls. The clients have gotten packets. We can get you the information that they've been given. I've got all that in my office. Every plan has to provide the base, right? So Medicaid has a base that's been approved and every plan provides that. So the ancillary services such as, maybe they're giving food vouchers or maybe they're giving extra preventative services or there might be some thing that another plan is providing. And so that is really what will drive a client to a particular plan. And the state, and I heard there was a lot of discussion about auto enrollment, the state is trying to auto-enroll them in the plan, in the provider they're currently with. Now, if that provider did not sign up with one plan or any plan, which we are hearing there are some providers that have not done that, then obviously the, the client would get either auto-enroll to whoever, which they could then choose, or the state is still advocating and... or the state is still advocating and working with providers, trying to get them engaged to contract. So that's the other issue, if the providers aren't contracting. In Davidson County, we only have had five percent of our Medicaid eligible sign up with a plan. So that, again, you heard, ten percent was estimated. Right now, we're a week out to the end of open enrollment, and they, only five percent of our population has signed up. But we are, we are not, DSS directors advocated very strongly the first go-round with the state to make us the sort of provide, the person who, or people who helped the clients select. But they wanted DSS out of it. They want it, so they engaged Maximus, who is the broker, and there is an 800 number. Last go-round, because you know, we already went through this once before, and then the state had to pause it. But last go-round, we actually had folks in our office to do that. This time, because of COVID, we've, we are sending them to the 800 number. We're trying, we're not supposed to help them, but we are sending them links. So DSS is very involved, and I know we have chosen not to do something in this community because of COVID, right? And until recently, the rules about meeting have been so stringent that to get a location that could accommodate that. So we have not done that. But there are opportunities. They're doing Facebook things to try to get folks engaged. So there's a lot going on. But we can still do, as Cardinal folks said, there are still opportunities for folks to select that. But we are, I wanted to say that we are involved. And once the client selects, if they're not happy, we know we're going to get the calls. And so we're trying to educate ourselves and be at the table. And if any of you know me, I'm very passionate, and I have already been advocating for folks. As far as the current, for, until the LME tailored plans roll out, the clients who are going, who are in that tailored level, who are not linked, will go to their current LME MCO. So until those plans become live, which is 2022, anybody in Davidson County would still go to currently Cardinal, right? So Cardinal is the LME MCO for Davidson County. And that will remain for those higher-level folks. Now, our foster kids are carved out, so that is even like three years down the road. And we chose, directors really fought hard, because the tailored plans were coming out, and they had not put enough thought into what was happening for foster children. So we fought very hard to make sure that foster children were carved out. So that's even further out. So right now, there's a lot going on. You heard the complexity, there's a lot of moving parts. But DSS is at the table, and I just wanted you all to know that. So we certainly can provide any information. I'm sorry to hijack your.
I would like to speak to that.
Sorry, I did this off the cuff, so I apologize.
I appreciate, you know, I appreciate all you've done. I'm over here.
Oh, sorry.
I appreciate all you've done. We all know that, you know, you're a dynamic director. You've done a lot for the citizens here in Davidson County, and you really care. It concerns me that only five percent of our Medicaid people. So something we're doing is not reaching the population. So we need to.
So this is a state issue, right? You heard ninety-four thousand out of a million-plus people have enrolled. It is a state problem. And how do you get folks to read their mail? They, so I get the return mail, right? So I will not tell you how many pieces of mail. First, they got packets, then they got postcards, then they got more packets, they've gotten letters. The unfortunate thing is.
Are you talking about the people?
The clients, our clients have gotten a lot of mail. But the unfortunate part of that is, the mail may have been so overwhelming, right? Because if you have three children in your home, then you have three different sets of mailings that you're getting. And then let's say I'm getting it, too, so now you may get four or five. And so it really is hard. And maybe you have somebody in your home who's supposed to select a plan, and somebody who can't, because their mental health needs are at a different level, right? So, and to speak to Commissioner Schell's issue about long-term care, and those folks who are in higher-level care, they're not part of this current wave, right? So we have so, DSS, we are really, you know, trying, and a client that currently has NC Medicaid Direct, as they call it, we don't know if you are going to be, you know, are you currently one of those folks who are going to be excluded because of your mental health? I mean, so we don't have that detailed. But the majority of our folks, of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand folks who are Medicaid recipients, the majority of them will go into a plan.
Okay.
So, but yeah, it is very complicated.
Do you know what the percentage of providers, doctors in Davidson County have signed up?
I do not, but we can get that for you. I would venture a guess that it's not as high as we would like, because that's what we're seeing across the state.
The other question.
The providers have been very slow about signing up as well.
In regular health insurance, we have a pathway to, if a provider wants to be certified, then we can get them certified very quickly. Is there a process for that?
You're talking about North Carolina Medicaid? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm talking about the provider. If their provider is not in there because they haven't signed up, is there a way we can get them signed up if they want to, and they've just been ignoring us? And I'll tell you, a lot of these doctors, whenever they start getting the calls, they will understand that they're not, they're going to lose that patient.
So it's up to the provider or the provider group? Let's say a hospital owns a provider group. The hot, that group would have to enter into an agreement with each plan, right? So that's something we cannot control. Honestly, I don't know that the state can control that either. I mean, because, and let's say Plan Blue Cross Plan does not want to pay you whatever rate, you know, because again, they're negotiating rates. There's a lot going on, and we have no control over that. So a provider group may be trying to get, you know, a higher rate than they get with, you know, Ameritas or whatever. So we don't know that. But the plans will be providing all of the services the client gets, including Medicaid transportation, which we're stepping out of to a large degree. So we won't even be involved in transporting our clients, because currently, we have contracts with providers to get clients to the doctor. So the plan will be doing all of that. So there's a lot, a lot, that the wheels are continually moving.
Yeah, my question was, if there is a provider out there that would like to be certified, do we have a pathway to get them certified?
The state does, and the plans do.
I just want to know what it is.
I don't know, but I will find out. Can you find out?
We can ask Maximus. On Maximus. Because that is a, well, it's a contract.
Yeah, they would have to choose to contract.
We do, we do, it's regular insurance, regular health insurance. We can get, if a provider's not, not on the list, and he wants to be on the list, we've got a pathway to get him certified.
Just to know what the steps are.
That's what I was asking.
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much.
Trish, thank you.
Thank you.
My wingman.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cara. The, Lillian, give her a shout-out real quick. She found the comparison of the plans, and I just sent that to you. Very nice, a little two-page PDF that lays them all side-by-side and shows the prices to get paid for different services. So thank you, thank you very much, Lillian.
Thank you all for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're also going to work to get some of this info in a format. I got Jason coordinating this up off Facebook, off our Facebook page and off the county website. So not to bombard people with too much info, but get some of these PowerPoints, maybe the concise information out there, people can start clicking on and knowing where to contact.
All right. We're, we're going to move on to the Davidson-Davy Community College Capital Outlay and Special Projects update, and Mr. Smith will lead this off.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'm going to ask Dr. Harnness to come up. A few weeks ago, he and I had a conversation about a variety of topics, some capital needs. If you don't mind, Dr. Harnness, I'll start that piece off, and then you can tag along, and then jump in on the special projects part. Every year, as part of the budget, we give the school systems and the college a capital outlay allocation. And for the college, it's been about $400,000 each year that they use on pricing elevators, ADA upgrades, heat pumps, things like that out at the campus. In our, in our major capital fund, where we provide funding for larger projects, we haven't traditionally had anything just for the college set aside, until we did say the Allied Health Building, since I've been here. I mean, I'm not saying there hasn't been any in the past. And so we've relied on that 400. Well, the four, every year, the college gives me their capital needs, and for the next five years, their capital needs, and I'm playing with round numbers, is about $2.8 million. So five, 400,000 times five is obviously $2 million. So there's a little bit of a gap there. And there happens to be one project on a sheet that you have before you here. Their capital needs is before you in your packet here. And I'll hold that up, as you can see. But if you see the total there, and then on the front side there, there's one project in the next handful of years, the G Building North Wing Rooftop Unit Replacements, that I'll let Dr. Harnness go into, replacing seven rooftop units that are 20 years old, that they're already having some leaky coal issues and things like that. I think what we agreed on, we talked about, is zeroing in on that. If the board, Dr. Harnness, again, can talk about it in just a second. If we can kind of zero in on that project to get it somewhat off the list, then the capital plan, at least over the next five years, levels out dollars for, it doesn't make it easy, but the college may have to move things around. But then their, their amount that they have, that they need for the next five years, at least matches the amount we're planning on giving. And then in future years, we can start taking a look at trying to get more, some dollars set aside, like we do for the three school systems, just for major capital needs out at the community college. So I'll let Dr. Harnness elaborate on that, if he can. And then I think he's got two other, what we'll call special projects, that he wants to give an update on.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good morning, Madam Chair and members. Good to be with you today. I also have with me our Vice President of Finance, Laura Yarborough, Vice President of External Affairs, Jenny Varner. Jenny's been very involved in long-range planning for the college as well. But it's a pleasure to be here. I didn't know I was going to be following such a deep and heavy issue this morning. But I want to bring to you some good news about your college. Things are working well at our community college, and we're providing solutions to citizens in Davidson and Davie County. Before I go into the capital piece, Casey, if you just give me a minute, I want to just share with you some good news. Our college has done extremely well over the past year during the pandemic. While we've seen an average decline in enrollment across the 58 community colleges in North Carolina of about 7%, our enrollment was up last summer, our enrollment was up in the fall, we're steady in the spring, and we're only one of four of the 58 colleges that have not had any decline in enrollment. So I think that's something we can be proud of as a community, that our citizens are continuing to be served. And I'm really proud of our faculty and staff for all they've done to maintain a safe and healthy environment. I really appreciate the partnership with our county health department, and Lillian Coontz especially, in her advisement. The vaccine clinics that she's held on our campus have been phenomenal. We've gotten really good feedback from citizens on how well those have been run. So good news about our college. Our college also continues to perform extremely well academically. Every year, the state of North Carolina has performance indicators on academic performance in community colleges. And last year, Davidson-Davy Community College was number one out of the 58 colleges in receiving our potential earnings for performance funding. And that allowed our Board of Trustees to give performance incentives for our employees back in December. So that's also excellent news. And you may have seen, we, we serve students in all different kinds of ways. And one of those is through storm athletics. You may have seen, last week, we had great news that our men's basketball team played in a national championship in Danville, Illinois. Unfortunately, we were runner-up, but the president of the community college system was on our campus yesterday to help us congratulate our men's basketball team. They were the first team from the state of North Carolina to compete in a national title since the history of NJCAA record book in Division Two or Division One. So not only did they make our college proud and our community proud, but they represented the state of North Carolina extremely well. So we're proud of the things that's going on at the college. And I could spend hours with you this morning talking about new programs and success of our students. But we want to hone in on exactly what Casey was sharing with you. We're appreciative of the support of our Board of Commissioners and the capital outlay that you provide. And if you look at this list of requests, these are our list of projects that are over $100,000. So out of the 400,000 that is provided each year, we try to tackle one or two of these projects. But we also have other capital needs that are under these thresholds. So we're hitting a lot of these projects. As you'll see, the top five there, we're slated for '21, '22. But we're getting to a point where the annual allocation won't allow us to do some of the bigger pieces. So what we would request is what your managers just outlined. Could we tackle one of these bigger issues together, so that we're not breaking projects up and not taking advantage of economies of scale, and look at knocking out some of those bigger, bigger projects? In addition, we would love for you to consider increasing our capital outlay allocation each year, so that we don't get ourselves in a position in the future to get farther behind. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have about these large capital projects that are on your sit plan. And I have Laura here as well.
Excuse me, the one for 900,000?
Yes, sir.
It says replacing seven rooftop units. Would they all have to be replaced at the same time?
We're having problems with all those units. They were installed at the same time, I'm assuming, Laura. And with just the economies of bringing the project together, it would cost more in the long run of trying to piecemeal those.
Okay.
But if you saw, if you see those first two, for example, you know, we're not, we're taking the 400,000 that, for all capital projects, and we're trying to hit one or two of each, each year. So we're slated to do the boiler replacement and the roof replacement on G South in this next fiscal year with the 400,000 allocation. But you can see how they stack up over time, so.
With the allocation we gave last year, what'd you do with that? What repairs were?
I don't have that list in front of me. Laura, do you recall the projects that we did in the last fiscal year?
Some off the top of my head are, we had some damper replacements in a Brooks Student Center that was detected to have asbestos, even though the building was built well after that point. So we had to bring in an architect, commit full drawings, have that asbestos remediated, as well as one of our condensers in the Brooks, chillers went down, had to have that replaced. And recently, we also had an elevator malfunction. And I love buildings, and we had an employee who heard the repair surgery over that. So we had to upgrade that elevator.
So a lot of these, Ms. Schell, you'll see are very common into what you'd see with county government buildings as well. Rooftop, roofs, HVAC, elevators, those types of major capital repairs. And, you know, we're just hoping that, that we can tackle these, and we sincerely appreciate your support as you consider all of your budget requests for the county needs. I've also provided a couple maps. Do they have those in the packets?
They're behind the dollars.
Behind this, I'm not sure which map you have first, but I wanted to point your attention to. I get a lot of questions about what's happening with the highway project that we've talked about for a decade. Right now, that project is slated to begin in October. I know that we've signed off on all of the right-of-ways and easements for that project to begin. As you recall, the project will, they'll be elevating Business 85 across from our campus and inserting a road underneath that highway to access the 185 acres that's owned by the foundation across the highway from the college. And you'll see a map there of future development ideas on that piece of property, which is not accessible now, other than Old Greensboro Road coming up the other direction. So this highway project will provide a safer entrance and egress to the campus. It'll also provide access to those, that acreage across the highway. On one of the maps that you have, that looks like this, you'll see that our foundation and our Board of Trustees and other folks that have been involved in planning have outlined a number of potential projects for that property across the highway, including a workforce development career center in partnership with our K-12 school systems, an economic development office, some commercial. There's been discussion of student housing at some point in the future, nature science center, research and development. These are all ideas that have been placed on the drawing board for future options of the use of that facility. One of the top uses that we've identified in partnership with economic development in our school systems is some type of workforce development training center, an opportunity to put under one roof a number of career and technical trades programs that would support our citizens and support a pathway through middle school and high school into college. As I talk to our, my superintendents in the four school districts that we serve, they all have programs, their career and technical programs out in their buildings that they're trying to maintain. There could be some economies to bringing some of those programs into a central location and offering a stellar program that would be accessible to all students across. and offering a stellar program that would be accessible to all students across the county. So we've had some discussions, we've brought some principals and superintendents and other folks to visit Catawba Valley Community College, they have a workforce training center like this. We've visited the Career Center in Forsyth County. So we're having some discussions about the potential to consolidate some programs that would also help you with your long-range capital needs of supporting those programs on individual campuses across the community. So I wanted to plant that seed with you. I find that rather exciting, because it would create a continuous pathway for students in high school through community college, straight into careers. And what we're seeing, if you talk to some of our instructors in the trades, is many of our students come to the college, and they're employed before or at the end of their first semester. You think about that. They're coming and gaining skills, and they're going straight to work. In fact, it's hard for us to keep them to complete a degree, because they get a certification and they're employable in an excellent job. So we want to make sure that our young people coming through high school and through the community college and our adults have access to high-quality training programs. We have the facility to do that. We just need to put together a plan, a long-range plan, to work together with our K-12 partners in the community to make that possible.
Got a question for you.
Sure.
How much does Davie County put towards the repair? What, what's their allocation per year?
I don't have that specific number, but we have a campus in Moxville that is much smaller than the, the main campus here between Lexington and Thomasville. They give us a current expense allocation, just like the, the county of Davidson. They give us a capital outlay allocation for that facility in Moxville. And most recently, the county commissioners have committed to four million dollars in Davie County toward a health sciences program and a building, a health sciences building in Davie. In addition, the county commissioners in Davie, along with some municipalities, have contributed to the Ignite Davie College Promise Program. So there's an allocation in the county budget in Davie towards scholarships for students for our community college.
I'd like to have that information.
Be glad to share that with you, Chris. Thank you.
Dr. Hartness.
Uh, maybe I misunderstood or didn't hear.
Did you say Business Eighty-Five would be elevated, or?
That's correct, Mr. Shore.
Elevated?
Yes, if, if you look at this map, you'll notice that the, the highway will be elevated, and there will be an elongated roundabout underneath the highway. So there will be exit and entrance ramps to the college off the highway. That project's been on the books for many years. It's been delayed a number of times, but according to our Regional Director, it's slated to begin in October. It's about a two-year construction project, too. So we don't have access to this property, really, for another two and a half years or so. But now's the time for us to really be thinking about it as a community. How do we want to utilize this opportunity to, to move our community forward? The, the last map that you have as well is, so there's a hundred and eighty-five acres across Business Eighty-Five. There's also a hundred and sixty, I think I lost, there it goes. There's a hundred and sixty-five acres on the other side of Old Greensboro Road, what we call Behind Subway. The college acquired that property, and it goes all the way down to almost the edge of Lake Tomalex. So we have potential growth in that direction as well that's already accessible. And, you know, on this map, you will see outlined a number of opportunities for athletics, a sports complex. We now have a national championship contender in, in men's basketball, and they're playing in a gymnasium that's about the size of a practice gym or a middle school gym. So it'd be wonderful to have a complex there that could be a multipurpose athletic complex, not only for a basketball, but for other events for the community. We could see a lot of different purposes for that. So our land planners have helped us find and identify space on that property for that, and you'll see that outlined in this map. We also have identified a spot for a public safety training facility, and I've been recently involved in conversations with the manager and with our public health director and with our legislators about the potential for some funding to support a public safety and public health training and distribution center on that piece of property. So we all have some, some opportunities ahead of us. We have lots of challenges. We have some one-time monies that are coming to us from the federal government that we didn't ask for, but we have an opportunity to use. And I hope that as I planted some of these seeds, you will see some opportunities, how we can partner and continue to support our local community college, because I think it is an institution that you can all be proud of, and I'm really honored to serve as your president. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have this morning.
I've got, I've got one.
Dr. Hartness?
Yes.
James, James Shores, I'm, I'm online here. Quick, quick question for you. We lose a lot of, I guess, public safety students to Guilford Tech Community College because they have, I guess, a mini fire station there with, with two fire trucks, and, you know, they actually put a lot of people through, I guess, a mini school, or not a mini school, but an actual, it's a, it's a degree program. In your public safety training space that you're, you're looking at in this map that I'm looking at here, is there, is there room for that, or has that been thought of? That, that would be a huge, to me, that would be a huge draw, especially with our public safety community here in, in Davidson County. Is there any, any thought process going to that?
Absolutely. And thank you, Mr. Shore, for asking that question. You know, there, I have had conversations with some of our fire chiefs and understand that there are a number of our firemen that are going to Salisbury and to other places that have much better facilities than we have here in Davidson. So that's one of the reasons why the college developed a, a plan for a public safety and fire safety training facility several years ago, but it's kind of been put on the shelf, and that's why we would like to revive that, so that we can have state-of-the-art facilities and equipment to train our firemen on and to help recruit new volunteers that I know is a difficult thing across every community. So yes, I'd love to share with you the concept that we have and, and the equipment and facilities that we have mapped out to have a regional fire training facility.
That would be great. One other question, and I don't know if you know or not, I, I'm a law enforcement officer, career law enforcement officer, and one of the other things that we do not have in, in our area is a driving, a driver's training facility where law enforcement can go and, and do driver training. We, we have to go all over the place, mostly in DeSanford, because they've got the biggest place down there for us to do driver's training. Would, has that been thought of, or is that a concept that, that could be put into play?
I don't have the details on that, James. I know that there is a, a large pad that was, was laid out and, and, because there's a lot of acreage around this facility, and I think that's something that definitely could be accommodated. I don't know that that's fully mapped out, and I'd love to talk with you more about what you've seen in other places that have been best practices and good models for us to consider.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trow.
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to ask, now that we've got it, is Davidson-Davy. When we talk about a, a major sports complex for the, because we've reached prominence in our sports, will this be Davidson-Davy together, or does Davidson have a, a sports team and Davie have a sports team, or?
We only have one, we have men's basketball, women's volleyball, and men's and women's golf. So all of our students participate in that. So it wouldn't, we don't have any athletic teams in Davie. They're all associated with Davidson-Davy Community College. So if we had something that would benefit those students, that's something we definitely could talk about with, you know, any type of joint partnership.
Well, you know, I, I think we're at a point where, we need to start looking at some kind of big complex, uh, sports for Davidson County, for, for Davidson-Davy County. And that's what I was wondering, if, if that could be a, a joint effort, with the two counties trying to put a complex together.
We could definitely have that discussion.
Uh, we, Dr. Hartness and I discussed this a, a year ago, maybe, maybe a year and a half ago. And one of the ideas that they expressed at that time was to make this, this whole facility accessible to the county teams as well, so that, you know, if, if they needed a facility to have some of their practices, or needed, needed a facility to have some of their games in.
Turnments.
And tournaments and that sort of thing would, you know, they would be amenable to working with our schools as well, so.
I'll one hundred percent support that.
Well, and I guess what I'm looking at is the fact that, you know, we, we have been recognized now nationally, and we got a, we got a gym out there now that's smaller than some of the high school gyms.
That's the truth.
We need something else. And.
Well, our athletics is a really important part, you know, it reaches a lot of our students. In community colleges, Laura can tell you, we're prohibited from using any state funds to support athletics. So our athletic programs are supported with student fees and tremendous support from the Davidson-Davy Community College Foundation. Without those, we wouldn't be able to have athletic programs. So this is a, a good opportunity, along with workforce development in the future, public safety and training facilities. So we've got a lot of good, good things that can happen to continue to support the, the health and well-being of our community, and we're just glad to be a part of that.
Is, you need a college moving more and more for server vocational training, four-year degrees versus two-year, or how, how, how is that projected to be in the future?
So I, I'd be glad to provide with you a, a list of the, over forty programs that we have. We have everything from short-term workforce development training that leads to a certification, such as a welder or a truck driver, to two-year programs, to four-year transfer programs. In the, in the last couple months, we've signed new agreements with Lee's McCray College, with Appalachian State University. We have agreements with UNCG and Winston-Salem State University. Our students are, are coming to us from everything, from a six-month to a year program, to a two-year transfer program, or staying with us a year and transferring to a four-year university. So we have a wide variety, Steve, of, of opportunities, depending on the pathway the student wants to take. We have new opportunities coming online. We have a new dental assisting program that will start up in the fall. We just went with our creditors last week. So that program will be preparing students in partnership with the East Carolina University Dental Clinic that's on our campus. So we're not specifically tied to specific programs. If we have programs that are needed for new industry that we want to attract in the community, or we customize programs for industries that come here. I mean, we've been big partners with our Davidson-Davy Apprenticeship Consortium. We have a number of student apprentices that are employed in different manufacturing facilities across the community. So we tailor to a lot of different areas. Health science is a really strong focus on our campus, so.
I'm telling you, and courses like HVAC, for example, just using it as an example. I, I think we're past the time where our, where our two-year institutions need to start looking at becoming four-year institutions. I mean, like twenty-six states are already doing that, and it's going to be much cheaper, it's going to be more of an economic boom for Davidson County, because that's what I got to look at, is Davidson County. And I think it's going to take a huge burden off of families. And I think we need to start looking, it's about time we start looking at certain programs, the nursing degrees, for example, becoming four-year institutions instead of two-year institutions. It's, we should remove, it's not about competing with four-year universities. They have their skills, architecture and stuff like. All these kids can't be architects. We need some HVAC people. They got solid jobs. We need, you know, electricians, they'll, they have solid jobs. You'll always need HVAC, you'll always need, and I think it's time that our community college start moving in that direction. Should have done it years ago. And like I said, you already got about twenty-six states that's already done it. I don't know why we're lagging behind, except for the competitive nature of education. But that's not good for families, in my opinion.
And, and, you know, we heard this earlier this morning, that's really a state structural issue that we need to be talking about.
I agree, I agree.
Those are the type of change, because you, you face it, we're the only education institution in our service district.
But who has the influence if not our educational institutions?
Exactly.
To motivate the public to get behind our, our two-year colleges, for example. And there's, there's certain criteria that we'll never be able to provide a four-year college for, unless, not, not even we're in the near future, for example, but some of these, these, what I call blue collar courses, a lot of people refer to, that's like HVAC and, and electrical work, and plumbers, stuff like that. That is, that's a, that's a necessity. And robotics is going to be a, a big, big challenge for the future. Those are things that, that I think our community college could provide services for at a, a much lower cost to the families.
And, and we do. If you know citizens who are interested in HVAC or taking a carpentry course or a plumbing course, tell them to come our way.
I'll tell you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Shores is, I mean, Shell is dead on. Places where you see workforce development centers, you see an uptick in big industry coming there, because if you teach high-tech, if you teach, you know, like you're talking about HVAC, you know, engineering, stuff like this, or even continuous improvement. People want continuous improvement, Six Sigma, people that, that can come in and, and do stuff like that, and we can train. I think there was a, there's a campus here in North Carolina that started this, and they saw a boom in people getting jobs and then teaching them how to just do, you know, normal tasks. Necessarily, you don't need a four-year degree to be able to provide for you and your family. And the, the map right here where you have that, that would be something that I believe in agreement with Mr. Shell. If we could focus on something like that, partner with our local school systems, maybe get some input from other colleges that have these, I think it could really move our county to a, to the next level. Thank you.
We're going to continue those conversations, Commissioner Elliott, and you'll, you'll hear more about that and, and some future requests coming down the line. So if you can keep those things in mind as you're thinking about your long-range planning for capital, I think that would be an excellent investment in our community.
That's right. Thank you.
One of the big advantages, excuse me.
A career advancement like, uh, it's left me, Dr. Hartness, the school out here on Holly Grove Road.
Valley Academy.
Valley Academy, sorry. Been a numerous time, just kidding, if we're not coming to me. I mean, I think it's a great, great relationship there, and I think I'm starting to see some of that curriculum start expanding into some of our high schools, which is something I felt needed to be done, you know, a long time ago.
You were spot on. I mean, the things that are happening at Yadkin Valley Regional Career Academy are phenomenal, and we've had discussions. We feel like this workforce development center would be a great location for that school in the future.
I agree.
Mr. McClure?
Laura.
One of the big advantages that the community college has had in, in economic development is working with companies that's coming in to, to train their personnel either on site or at the college. And we really appreciate that. It's, it's helped us to, to get several manufacturing companies.
It's our pleasure. We enjoy that, that work and are fully engaged in those opportunities.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
If it's, and if it's forward, we'll, we'll move forward with pulling funds from capital reserve and try to get this G Building air conditioning taken care of. Hopefully that gets the capital plan a little bit leveled out, and then we, next year we can start taking a look at.
Are you all in agreement?
A sustained level of funding for these larger projects.
Okay.
Thank you all.
So much.
Thank you.
Have a good morning.
I'd invite Ms. Coontz to come talk with us about the Davidson County Child Fatality Prevention Team Annual Report.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's wonderful to see y'all, as Dr. Hartness shared his disappointment with following such an in-depth discussion. I share the disappointment of such a high and hopeful discussion to talk about child fatality. This is a committee that, as a public health director, I'm required to be on, and it's a very important committee, but it's a tough one. You know, talking about children's deaths is a hard thing. Like so many things, in 2020, the activities for child fatality protection teams were kind of put on hold, where typically the team meets on a regular basis in person, and they talk about the fatalities. This year, we did not. However, we did review them internally. Mary Lou Hollitt, our nursing director, receives the deaths and then looked through them, and we looked for trends. And that is the responsibility of the Child Fatality Protection Team, to see any trends that we have in Davidson County and then act on those trends. Last year, we had sixteen, or in the review period, we had sixteen deaths. Nothing had really- Nothing had really changed from the previous year. Safe sleep continues to be an issue. So what we are doing at the Health Department, I think I showed y'all a couple years ago, the safe sleep onesies. We're still handing those out. Um, we are handing out brochures and pamphlets to pregnant mothers about the importance of safe sleep. And we also managed to get some finds to purchase pack in place. And we have um given those out to different um agencies in the community. I believe the sheriff has some still. Um, our police officers have it, so if they go into home and realize that there's a small child there that doesn't have a safe place to sleep, they can give them that pack and play. So that's what we're doing to try to combat that. Part of the um duties of that uh protection team is um to present this to you guys. So that's what we're doing, and we're really looking forward to next year, we can get back together in person. But like I said, despite the fact that a lot of the activities were put on hold, we were still reviewing and were able to um, just, we saw that we needed to continue on with the safe sleep. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all.
May I have a consensus to accept this report?
I move. Yes.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to federal tax credits for emergency paid sick leave and call on Mr. Deal. Good morning. Okay.
This is part of the information that I sent you earlier this morning, too. Do you have that?
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Just to make this as simple as I can, um if you'll recall, last spring, we um, the federal government required employers to pro- provide emergency paid sick leave and emergency family leave. That ended in December. Um, they have now, through the Americans Rescue Plan, made those two things optional for employers. The difference between now and last year is it was required by employers and there was no mechanism for reimbursement. This time, they've made it voluntary, and they have put in a mechanism for us to get reimbursed for that. Um, and it's through tax credits, through payroll, we would reduce our payroll taxes as we paid this out to employees. And so we would like to start doing that again this year, um, starting um as soon as you guys would um approve it, um, perhaps next board meeting. Um, and so what we would do is we would provide uh the eighty hours of emergency paid sick leave, and it's just for COVID-related events. Um, and and we would not, though, offer the emergency family paid leave. So we can separate those two now. So it's just really the eighty hours, if someone is exposed or comes down with COVID. Um, a couple of other requirements that are options, but. Happy to answer any questions that you have. Pretty simple, if you try not to get chewed out in the weeds.
Question? All right, may I have a consensus to place this on the May eleventh, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one consent agenda for approval?
Yeah.
Consensus?
Hang on.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Harris is going to lead us in the public hearing for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Due to the implementation or moving to the Denton Orator, and the fact that even if we stayed with the dispatch, they've changed their lead times and publication dates. We need to get this put in the newspaper next week. And with the lead times, it wouldn't allow us the ten days that we need to have the public hearing. So if you all would allow us to request a public hearing to be set for May twenty-fifth for the budget, we will go ahead and get that information out to the Orator so we can get it put in the newspaper.
So I move.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Um, gonna do a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Shul?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. That vote carries by, or that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So I move.
Motion to adjourn? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
When you're ever gonna get one.
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of six zero.